I'm calling to order the Planning Board meeting for November 14th, 2023. We'll start with roll call to my left.
Aaron Finnegan.
David Trask.
Paul Jacques.
Evan Seer.
Amanda Garret.
Tim DeRoche.
Tony Ferraro.
So Ms. LeBlanc is not here this evening, so I'll be chairing the meeting. And that means I have to elevate one of the associate members. It'll be Amanda Garret this evening. I want to, looking for a motion to accept the meeting minutes from last meeting, last two meetings probably.
I just have a correction. I was here in the last meeting, I was just late. And I'm just not listed.
I'll make a motion to accept the meetings amended to show that Ms. Ferraro was present.
Any discussion? No.
That was good, a second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Looks like it passed, I saw some people didn't vote. Okay. Motion carries. Our first agenda item tonight is a public hearing text amendment on the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District. I'll hand it over to staff.
The first item on the agenda is the text amendment to Article 12, Division 4, Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District. You have in your packet a staff report as well as a copy of the Lake Auburn Watershed Ad hoc Committee report that was formed by the Auburn Water District, included membership from both cities, both staff and elected officials, that made recommendations on the changes that you're reviewing tonight. You probably noted in reviewing the staff report that there is a version A and version B. There were a couple of minor changes made between version A and version B. The substantial change was a more accurate description of the structure of the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission from the agreement between the cities of Lewis and Auburn, City of Lewis and Auburn Water District and the town of Turner, and clarifying that although there are members on that board from Hebron Mine and Buckfield, the agreement was not inclusive of those towns signing. And the other change to version B, since the last time you saw this at workshop, was pointed out to us during a peer review that the soil filter media that the ordinance required would be used underneath a system to provide the best wastewater treatment was referenced in all the presentations, but it wasn't clearly inserted into the ordinance. So we added that text to specify the soil media that would be required. Those were the changes between the version A and version Bs the board had seen, have in front of you tonight. And here's, Catherine has that section up. Same soil media specification that's been talked about since, in all the presentations, since David Roke and city staff had worked to come up with that specification, but it's now inserted in the ordinance as well. So there's no room for misunderstanding. We laid this, this hearing out at the request of the board in multiple sections. This will be one public hearing, but also broken out into multiple sections so that the subsurface wastewater standards are one section, the agricultural buffer strips are one section, and they're broken out so you could decide to support one and not the other section, should you choose to do that. Staff recommends that all of version B be adopted, but at the request of the board we did break it out into those sections. Did you use the PowerPoint or go through this one?
Yep, I can use the PowerPoint.
We also, in the staff report, provided recommendations, recommended motions for each of those sections. And in talking with the chair before the meeting, it sounds like you'll probably discuss one of those sections and allow for public input on that, and provide a recommendation and move through them one, one section at a time. So the first section and the first motion is really a simple clarification that anywhere that we reference the Lake Auburn Watershed District, the ordinance really calls it the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District, and we've tried to make that consistent throughout the ordinance. B?
It's just, I just remember them.
Okay.
I don't remember the whole part of version B.
This, again, clarification on Overlay District and Auburn Water District instead of the City Water District. And also part of this section is the clarification that I mentioned where we added the definition of the commission and how that agreement was arranged, as well as the soil filter media Continuing with the specification for soil media, and that's, that's the first section, I think.
Yeah.
Those were mostly clarifications, but we separated those out as a single item so the board could discuss those individually.
Paul was just trying to remember what was discussed in the staff meeting at the last planning board, specific to whether we were doing one public comment or...
But you could still make decisions individually after that. It's up to you what you prefer.
Yep.
We're happy to do it either.
The way that the motions themselves are broken up is by section, and then under some of the larger sections that cover a lot of different topics, we broke it down topically so you could make a motion on each, but how you want to structure public hearings is up to you all.
And when we make the motion, I assume that we've referenced whether or not we want it from the original motion A or the original motion B, since the language for the recommended proposal is actually the same, or do we need to read the entire material?
I think we, staff is recommending that B includes the clarifications that our legal advice desires. I don't think you need to read the entire section, as long as you reference the section number and the version B, hopefully, for each of those.
You guys okay with that? Okay.
And this slideshow of possible motions are all from motion, or from version B, is what these are, because that's what we're recommending.
So would you like us to go through the rest of the sections and then discuss and open the public hearing, or do you want to open the public hearing on this section before we move to the next one?
I would like to have you go through all of them and then have the, the public hearing, and then, of course, vote on each one at the end.
Okay, we're happy to do it that way. So this section is the section that exempts these single-family dwelling allowances from the impacts of LD 2003, that was later turned into these, these sections of law in the Act to implement the recommendations of the commission to increase housing opportunities. LD 2003 throughout the state will allow for up to four units on any lot that allows for a single family that is inside of a growth area, or an area where water and sewer are available. The goal with this section is to make sure that if the city has decided that one and two family homes are allowed in a residential zoning district, that we're not increasing the development inside the watershed, and we're allowed to exempt this area in the watershed based on the law from those increased number of units. Staff recommends that we do. The ordinance allowed for the spreading of municipal sludge and had a really outdated set of standards for the spreading of manure. We're proposing, as part of this draft, and was recommended from the ad hoc committee, that we no longer allow for the spreading of municipal sludge, knowing what we know now about the PFAS problems. Not that there is municipal sludge being spread in the watershed, but we thought it was safer to prohibit it if that practice ever comes back. And then we updated the standard by which manure could be spread to match the latest best management practices at the state.
I apologize, I think you've skipped F.
Oh, maybe I, I didn't, it looks like I just skipped F in this. So no, no motion F.
So F is...
There's not one that exists, I just misnumbered, mislettered them.
F is an amendment that would change the untilted buffer strip with regard to agriculture from 50 feet to 100 feet. Correct. So that, that's what F is about. F is about, specific to increasing buffer strip from Lake Auburn or its tributaries from 50 feet to 100 feet.
On the bottom of page nine, top of 10.
Okay. Thank you, sorry about that.
Yes, and we do recommend that the board do that. Sorry we missed it in the PowerPoint.
Oh, well, it's there. It looks like it's at the border.
So this would increase that strip, and it also better defines the tributaries that would receive that protection by referencing the USGS MAP seven and a half minute series that's been used for a long time as one criteria to determine where a stream exists. So this is one of the primary pieces of the ordinance change that drove a lot of the discussion. This is the new subsurface wastewater standards, and I know that the board already made a recommendation on this, but I just want to be clear that, and the board recommended this last time. This will, without changing the density allowances in the rural residential zone, this would result in more buildable lots. And as you know from prior discussions, the change from one acre to three acre minimums for future minimum lot sizes, wherever the one acre lot size exists in the watershed will be important to not only offset any increase, but also reduce the actual number of future lots that would be possible in the Lake Auburn watershed, along with the better subsurface wastewater disposal standard. The current standard requires that 36 inches of suitable soils exist on site, but then requires that the system be set 12 inches below the organic layer that exists on the site, resulting in a 24-inch vertical separation from the limiting factor in the bottom of the system. And the limiting factor, as you know, is, could be groundwater, could be ledge, could be an impermeable layer of, of clay, or something that stops the drainage. The new standard doesn't require that the 36 inches exist on site, but it does require that a 36, true 36-inch separation be built on site with the specified media that's, that was described in the definition section. So it, it doesn't cite systems necessarily in the poorly drained, the really well-drained soils where treatment can be relatively poor because of how quickly they drain. It cites new systems on top of the organic layer where most of the treatment can occur, and it requires that we build a true 36-inch separation from that limiting factor in the bottom of the bed are the primary reasons why it can provide better, better wastewater That's the actual text. Again, clarifying Auburn Water District versus City Water District. We've tried to fix these inconsistencies as part of this process.
And then it looks like this is out of order, but motion H. Is, is, this one is just a, a language clarifying amendment, much like the first, the first amendment in here, to change Water District to Auburn Water District?
This, again, better defines or clarifies the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District as a zoning amendment, and then just the word "which" to clarify that definition. Clarifications, again, replacing the word sewage to match the terminology used in the state plumbing code with subsurface wastewater disposal, and the City Water District becoming With that, happy to answer any questions about specific sections, and certainly can have the public hearing after that.
Do you guys have any questions for staff, or things you want to just say?
That's actually my question. Am I present? Am I able to vote on this, on these upcoming measures? Am I present? I didn't, I didn't declare myself in attendance, and I didn't know if I was...
Oh, you're here, yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing, yes?
I'll make a motion, open the public input section of the hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Clarification for members of the public, it's my understanding, Mr. Chair, that you are asking members of the public to comment on all of the, all of the proposed text amendments during this, this one section?
Would you guys be okay with that? And just make sure you guys reference if you have the specific motion, so when we make notes, we know exactly which one that you're talking about. Okay, would anybody in the public like to come up and talk? You have five minutes.
I'm sure it won't, won't take that long. I'm Ben Lounsbury, and I'm supposed to reference the section to which I'm referring. It's the portion of saying that the septic systems, the mound septic systems, chamber mound septic systems would be required in certain areas.
Is that motion I? I just want to...
It looks like it's motion I.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Okay, thank you. Dear Planning Board members...
I've been asked to keep time, I just want to let you know I paused as soon as...
Yeah.
We tried to figure that out, so you get your full time.
Dear Planning Board members, thank you for your time-consuming service over the years. I would like to address the question of chamber mound septic systems versus traditional systems, which is basically the wrong question to ask. Chamber mound systems are not the answer to the problem of development in the Lake Auburn watershed. There should be no further development in the watershed. Every consultant has stated there should be no further development in the watershed. Chamber mound systems might be useful in situations where a pre-existing house on a small lot in the watershed experiences failure of its septic system, but the availability of chamber mound systems is not the solution to the question of development in the watershed. There should be no further development in the watershed.
Good evening, my name is John Cleveland, I live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. Good evening to all of you. I'd like to start my remarks by commenting on this structure where you have at least four different important subjects all clustered into one. They include the water overlay district pertaining to animal farms, the agricultural buffer strips, the septic system buffer strips, and the private septic system subsurface wastewater. I want to comment that I'm strongly opposed to this method of going forward, putting them all together, and then limiting each of us in the public five minutes for the whole bunch. In effect, what you've done is, whether it was intentional or not intentional, you've really deprived me and any other citizen from being able to comment on all of them because it's impossible to give meaningful discussion in five minutes on all of these important topics. So I'm going to choose one, since I'm forced to do that. The one I'd like to talk about is the new septic system structures that are being proposed. We've asked multiple times and asked for documentation, and apparently no scientific documentation exists that says the mound system is superior to the current system. Maybe for particular applications it's more useful, but in and of itself, for its purpose, it is not better than the current system that we have. And based on the current planning staff's analysis of this, even when you combine it, and I have to say this because I don't have any other choice, to reducing or increasing the lot size, even when you do that on the analysis, it's essentially a wash on the number of buildings that are able to be built there. You don't gain anything by doing that at all. And even in the scientific peer review, it's stated in their review that it appears that the purpose of doing that and putting those together is a political one as opposed to a scientific one. That's not a good planning approach to go. Good planning in regards particularly to the fact we're talking about Lake Auburn, which is the drinking water supply for more than 40,000 people, should be one of caution and great care to make sure that the water supply is not in any way compromised because of development. Good planning and recommendations from professionals have said over and over again, the best solution is to minimize development in the Auburn, Lake Auburn watershed, and I hope that that's what you will do. I'm going to end it there because I don't have a lot of time to go in detail, but others will provide you very specific details that relate to my remarks.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Shaw. I live at Sopers Mill Road, and I own and operate Valley View Farm. I'm also a supervisor for the Soil and Water Conservation District in Androsgogon and Sagahawk Counties. I take exception to the mass aggregation of changes in this amendment. I feel it's confusing and bulky, and I don't think that there's been enough serious conversation about some of these issues. In particular, the one that I take exception to is essentially the elimination of agricultural, forestry, maple syrup sugaring uses in the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District. We have a lot of great new technology, there are plans and financial incentives in place to help people that want to start smaller farms or agricultural businesses, and the elimination of this opportunity in the watershed, I think, is a detriment, and it is not prudent at this time. I'd like you to reconsider.
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. Because of the way that these ordinances are compiled together under one heading, I'll talk briefly about the animal farm one first, and then about the septic design. This board and the city council made a massive revision to the Agriculture and Resource Protection Zone ordinance only four months ago, finally concluding a process that took almost a year to do. And as a result of that process, there are a number of agricultural uses permitted in approved areas in the agricultural zone, and including a large area within the watershed. There are conventional farming uses, as well as new and expanded uses, which include such things, as Ms. Shaw just said, of maple sugar operations, growing mushrooms, if you wish, flowers, berries, and a variety of other non-traditional farming uses are now permitted uses. This proposed ordinance change would gut all of those uses, both the conventional farming and the additional permitted agricultural uses in the ag zone part of the watershed, which is 73% of the watershed, as well as would prohibit them in the rural residential and low-density country residential parts of the watershed. It's a total prohibition of those kinds of uses, which reverses something that the city did, both via the planning board and the council, just a few months ago. It makes absolutely no sense. Now, on to the septic issue. This has been the subject of a lot of discussion for the last three or four years, and there have been a number of staff efforts to refine and improve the thinking on this subject. Mr. Blay of the planning staff did a series of very helpful memos, the most recent of which was on October 11th last year, comparing the merits of the chamber disposal system or the mound system with the conventional in-ground septic systems, and if those changes were adopted to provide for the new mound system only in the watershed area, that is in the rural residential district, compared to no such changes, what would be the result as well as if the rural residential district lots were in the watershed, were enlarged and made into low-density country lots? I realize that's a separate agenda item, but it's impossible to talk about those two separately. I would refer you to Mr. Blay's memo of October 11, 2022, in which, as Mr. Cleveland alluded, if you made both changes to the new type of disposal system, private disposal system, and changed all the rural residential lots up to low-density country, increasing the lot size from one acre minimum to three acres for a buildable lot, there would be a net decrease in the number of buildable lots over a 25-year buildout of minus three, vertically a wash. So the real question then became, that, the early studies on this were then peer reviewed by CEI associates as a result of a request by the Watershed Protection Commission, which has a very strong interest in all of this from the perspectives of both Lewis and Auburn. And the CEI memorandum, which was dated October 17 of last year, said, relaxing the septic system regulations opens the door for future development in the ag district. Why introduce new buildable lots at all if the focus is to reduce development? If you simply changed the... If you simply changed the minimum lot size, there would be a net reduction of 21 buildable lots in the watershed area in the rural residential subzone converted to low-density over 25 years. And why not just do that, was the thrust of this CEI memorandum. There are two possible answers. Either the chamber system, the mound system, produces a better result in removal of BOD load, or it's a political trade-off for increasing the lot size. Why not do just the scientific thing and increase the minimum lot size and forget changing the requirement if the technical result in terms of BOD load removal is virtually a wash with the conventional method? The only reason why the BOD, excuse me, why the mound system produces a greater amount of effluent removal is because it permits those chamber systems to be used in smaller territories. Therefore, if you've got a 10-acre parcel, you can put more systems on them. That reduces the BOD load by a greater amount, but it's because you've got many more buildings. And that's just not a good technical solution. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to us tonight. My name is Bruce Ryu, 85 Mary Carroll Street in Auburn, and I'm a ratepayer of the Auburn Water District. And matter of fact, I have two properties up in New Auburn that I pay quarterly rates for the Auburn Water District. And I was also a member of the Auburn Water District trustees and on the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission when this whole septic system came up in 2008. We voted no on the Water District, no on the Watershed Protection Commission, the Planning Board voted no, and the city council voted no to make the septic changes back then. And for 2008 to 23, 15 years, we've had very affordable water and no pollution in the lake. So I think, in retrospect, I think we made the right vote back in 2008. But tonight, I question whether or not this planning board has the authority to make these changes. Because the way Eric presented this and the way it's written up, the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission is going to be paying for monitoring. And the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission is funded 100% by the Auburn Water District ratepayers and the Lewiston Water Division ratepayers, not by the taxpayers. So this entity, I don't think, has the authority to push bills onto people who are ratepayers to monitor these changes. I don't think you have that authority, to tell you the truth. If this was written up, that the Public Works Department's going to do the monitoring, or, you know, Eric's department's going to do the monitoring, that would be one thing. But you're saying the Watershed Protection Commission, so me as a ratepayer, I'm going to pay for the monitoring of people who are not even going to be buying the water. The other thing, by making the changes, the people who develop land up there, they're our own wells. They don't receive our water. So I'm paying a fee, you know, for increasing protection on all of these things that we have to do to protect our lake and for people who are not going to be contributing. So I don't know how you figure that out, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I think it's a serious problem. And again, thank you for that.
Good evening. I'm Bonnie Lowens, Berry West Auburn Road. I won't prolong things by speaking much. I just wanted to say how disappointed I am that, over the course of the last couple of years, the planning board has never really considered any ways of significantly reducing the potential for development in the watershed. As people have said, the number of houses proposed will be essentially the same as it would have been under the old rules. What the planning board and staff have done, and have had to, is respond to specific directives from the mayor. I hope that in the future, the planning board will use its authority under our city ordinances to make proactive recommendations for development and planning in the city. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Dennis Bergeron, 23 Dexter Avenue in Auburn. I've been a ratepayer of the Water District for 35 years, and I've been a taxpayer in the city of Auburn for 35 years. I'd like to make some narrow suggestions, but on the broader scope, I want to agree with Mr. Ryu, the equity issue of having water customers pay for things that are going on out in the non-water part of the city. It doesn't make much sense. And with that, I'm going to talk to the narrower parts of what you're considering here tonight. I don't know exactly what sections they're in, but I'll try to be clear about it. The first goes to hobby and non-hobby agricultural uses. I think the goal here is, by dividing it into commercial or non-commercial, is to try to make a change in the intensity of use. And dividing it into commercial and non-commercial simply doesn't work. As you've heard already, there are some commercial uses, commercial agricultural uses, that don't have great impacts. There are others that do. Likewise, there are hobby uses that are non-commercial that can have huge impacts. My understanding is that Mr. Shaw has 40 head of horses up in green. That's not commercial. So I don't think you want to do that. I think perhaps breaking it down into permitted uses and non-permitted uses, like you do for other zones, would be a helpful way to go. The other one is, regards the Auburn, Lake Auburn Water Protection Commission may inspect properties. There's a section there that's, you're about to vote on. It doesn't say what LAPCA can do with an adverse finding on their inspection. The next section of the motion has the Auburn Water District may inspect these systems. There, there's remedy. If the Auburn Water District finds something that they disagree with, they have a remedy, but LAWC, WPC does not. So that doesn't seem correct to me. Then, I hope that the staff can answer this, that all of these systems get inspected by the city, right? Does a code enforcement official inspect every septic system that goes in? Yeah. Well, you should check on that, and again, that should be paid for by the city and not by the Water District. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Good evening. Sharon Philbrick Bergeron, 23 Dexter Avenue. Wow. Your job of deciding land use per the comp plan has never been so complicated. My comments overarching, but I'll start with page four of the packet. The First Staff Report, text amendment to the watershed overlay, has two versions. There are 11 spoon-fed motions each, spanning 12 pages. Wow. This is crazy, that you can, that you were asked to cram all of this discussion and decision-making about something as important as changing Lake Auburn watershed into one meeting. But it is by design of the current mayor, who, in the latest poll, was not very popular, to ensure that these changes have finalized the meeting before the next mayor and the city council, who will listen to Auburn citizens, are seated. Put a pause on this and take your time and do it right. Thank you.
Seeing no one else coming up, I'll make a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? The only explicit question I heard were, do all systems get inspected by the city? I assume Mr. Bergeron was being specific to the watershed.
Yes. Throughout the city, all new septic systems are inspected as part of the permitting process during construction. There's usually at least three inspections as part of that. There's also inspections generated when there is a failure of some kind observed by the property owner, or a neighbor, or somebody passing by, then we would do an inspection to see if the system is failing. And I would just add that this ordinance gives the Auburn Water District and the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission specific authority to do periodic inspections, and to require corrections in the event of a failure. That was something we thought was important to strengthen as part of the changes.
I have said something probably last meeting and almost every time we talk about this, and I just feel really strongly about checking septic systems that do not have septic designs on file. It's very common in that area. It's not even new builds. It has nothing to do with any new development. It's actually all of the older homes that are in that area that do not have working systems, or that people don't know that they don't have working systems. I think it's really important to fix the problems that have been occurring for years with failed septic systems.
And we have discussed that with LAPAC, and especially with the Ad Hoc Committee that made recommendations on these, made up a membership from LAPAC, as well as the two cities, and Turner. We don't have the exact program shelled out, but I think you'll see the date in here as July 1 of '24. That gives us a chance to budget this year to make sure we have the capacity to do a program that can provide those inspections. But the plan is, preliminarily anyways, to prioritize those that, A, either don't have a design on file, so we have no idea what the system is, and then their proximity to the lake, and then their proximity to a tributary, and then work our way out so eventually all the systems can be inspected.
And this is when homes are also being sold, correct?
Yes. At the time of sale, we can require an inspection. And that, that really, what drove that is because we know that there's resources available at time of sale where it's really difficult for a new homeowner that might have just extended themselves. Their system was inspected by Auburn Water or LAPAC four years ago, and then one year after purchasing it, they committed, you know, there's a failure, it puts that homeowner in a very challenging spot, whereas it could have been fixed as part of the sale with the equity that the seller was walking away with.
Did you say we can require, or we do require, an inspection at the point of sale?
So we, LAPAC has the ability to inspect, so it doesn't, I think it was pointed out at the last meeting, that the draft said LAPAC shall inspect upon sale in every five years. We really couldn't force LAPAC to do that. We know that they're interested in having that ability, but it says that they shall have the authority to inspect. And we'll be working with them on a program to make that happen.
But the verbiage is, they shall have the authority, not that they shall inspect. So it's two very different meanings, correct?
Very different. Yeah, we can't make LAPAC do that, but we know that they want the ability to inspect those systems, to ensure that they're not negatively impacting the lake.
Can we make the city do that, or does that have to go through LAPAC?
Part of the reasoning, I mean, we're trying to work in consultation, LAPAC is the organization that's charged with protecting the water quality of Lake Auburn for the ratepayers of Lewiston and Auburn. So as an attempt to provide equity and have an entity that is funded by all of the users of the water from the lake, to work towards protecting the water source so that they can keep their water rates low, that's very important to the city as well. But bringing LAPAC into that is an attempt to try to bring some equity to the users of the water, paying for the protection of the water supply that they use. I think one of the comments, a couple of the comments may have been made, that people that live near the lake quite often don't use the public water. They have private wells, and LAPAC doing those inspections is a way for the users of that water to pay for the protection of their water.
And just to point out, the actual language here says, LAPAC or its designated shall have the right to inspect private subsurface wastewater disposal systems, et cetera.
There were several comments around mounted systems. There was even a specific comment stating that there's been nothing that shows that these are better than a regular system. This was something that was discussed with CEI by the LAPAC board, a regular system versus a mounted system. And in a regular sort of situation, your average soil, all being the same, one is not better than the other. In this case, it was determined by CEI, as well as the expert from the state that came in and spoke to us, that these systems are better than a traditional system placed within the gravel media that exists where you have 36 inches within the watershed right now. And that's an important, that's an important point to note. A mounted system isn't better than a traditional system always. All things being equal, one is not better than the other, but all things are not equal within the watershed. We've learned here and through LAPAC that the gravelly soils simply do not treat the effluent, and that the mounted systems, particularly mounted systems with definitions added by legal in the proposal B, describes a set of soils that treat effluent, the effluent coming out of these systems, better than a traditional system in the gravel soils that exist within the watershed. It's specific to those soils. That's why this system was looked at, not because a mounted system is better. A mounted system allowed for the use of the required soils that would make the system better. Thank you, Mr. Seif, for saying that. Mr. Cousins, is that clear enough, you think?
Yeah, the separation that's provided with the right soils to properly treat wastewater, that is the improvement. And it was mentioned that they had to be chambered mounted systems. They don't necessarily have to be chambered systems, but they do, under the proposed ordinance, they do have to provide for a full 36 inches of separation. And then there's various ways, chambers or stone beds that can be used under the main state plumbing code to achieve the distribution of that wastewater above a true 36-inch separation under the ordinance.
There was also some conversation around number D, or the letter D, to talk about non-hobby versus hobby. Was there any consideration made when this was drafted to potentially look at permitted uses versus non-permitted uses, which is, I believe, something Mr. Bergeron had mentioned?
Did you say permitted uses versus non-permitted? What, what we were trying to achieve is, we were given a directive to restrict, because agriculture can have an outpaced impact on the lake, even compared to residential uses, restrict the expanded clearing and the animal waste and exposed soils that come with agriculture over time. So we looked at how to do that, working with our legal counsel, and one of the things that kept coming up is that there is a, and I don't think the intent was to stop somebody from being able to garden, you know, in their single-family rural house lot, but the goal was to make sure that we don't have commercial, large-scale farming operations that create nutrient or soil runoffs in the watershed. When we looked at that, we can't prohibit somebody from producing their own food on their parcel, so we looked at that as a way to en- So we looked at that as a way to ensure that there's a review process where the Auburn Water District has to approve, similar to how new farms are created in the watershed now. But the Auburn Water District has to approve that their farm plan is small-scale, meets the definition of hobby farm, but also will not create specific problems with altering drainage or creating runoff that would be a detriment to the lake. Yeah, here's the conditions. The owner or operator first demonstrates LOPAC's watershed manager that the use or expansion will not cause groundwater contamination. It will not contaminate or distort the normal course of surface water runoff. And two, that such use or expansion is approved in writing, so notifies the code office, enforcement officers. We can't prohibit someone from producing their own food on their property. We thought this was a way to make sure that it was done so that it didn't impact the lake that the Auburn Water District had the problem.
It's also worth noting that LOPAC suspended all of its tree cutting and logging operations within the watershed because of specific concerns. That is not to say that harvesting timber or clearing trees in order to make, for instance, space, if you're a maple farm, you're going to, you don't want such a super high density. But it's not to say those things can't be done responsibly in areas. I think it was more just to say that couldn't be, was LOPAC's opinion when they decided to suspend logging that even if it could be done responsibly, it couldn't be done responsibly enough to justify doing it within the watershed.
And this set of changes did not prohibit selective timber harvesting or, as you said, other uses that are not agricultural uses, but...
Well, I'm just pointing out that we can also look to some of the things that LOPAC have done as well already.
Somebody had mentioned that there was, that they had shut down plans in 2008 and that there hasn't been any pollution since 2008?
Yeah, so the planning board considered around that time, don't quote me on the exact date, but I would guess that he has it right, considered the elimination of the 36-inch standard. It was not the same comprehensive change that's in front of you now. And we've certainly had water quality issues and results during that timeframe that are really partly the motivator behind some of these changes is that what we've been doing has not protected the lake.
Yeah, I've sold a couple houses up in West Auburn and they had wooden septic systems. So they were not functioning whatsoever, but people were still using them as if they were.
This will give us the ability to inspect those periodically. And we've certainly had nutrient problems and algal bloom problems in the lake during that time. You know, we've enlisted help from a variety of the experts in the state, the peer reviews from CDM Smith and as well as CDI, looking at FB Environmental's work and David Roke's work. These changes can protect the lake better and fix some of the known problems. The septic systems draining into loose sandy gravelly soils that don't provide treatment. We're trying to fix that with these changes. Even if it doesn't significantly reduce the number of house lots, it reduces it, it doesn't increase it. But it provides, system by system, it provides better wastewater treatment than the current standard.
Is there, and I apologize, I would have probably asked this if I could have made it last month, but is there a reason why instead of prohibiting non-hobby agricultural uses, we make them subject to the same requirements as we're making hobby uses where there's a demonstration to LOPAC's watershed management that the expansion or use or expansion would not cause groundwater contamination?
Yeah, that's essentially what we have for a standard now. That Auburn Water District can review those to determine if they'll cause problems with groundwater or surface water runoff. The council asked us as part of the changes to restrict the creation of new farms in the watershed, especially new animal farms. So that's, you know, where this draft came from. And part of that was because previous reports have identified, including the FB environmental report, that agriculture can be one of the biggest contributors to nutrient runoff, even more so than single-family homes.
So if the intent's to prevent it, what if someone, if we didn't change anything and someone wanted to do a chicken farm or something, they could come to the city and you'd say, well, no, that would have a detrimental review, like, well, prohibited if the review is already taking care of things that would affect the water quality?
Yeah, you know, that's a possibility. That's not what we were asked for. I think what we've run into with some of the farms that we've approved over the last number of years is that they have a plan that the district is comfortable with, but they don't always follow that plan. You know, there may still be impacts. Plus, there's a lot of agricultural land already in the watershed that can continue to be used for agriculture in the future.
How many people come to you to have farms or have sugar syrup farms?
I'm trying to think, in the watershed, maybe a handful over the last 10 years in the watershed. We wouldn't necessarily know if somebody is tapping trees. There's no farm plan for that that's using the existing forest. But we've seen horse farms, small crop operations. Most of them have used existing agricultural land, though, and they don't necessarily come to the city for a plan. They're haying or they're using existing orchards or things like that.
Is there a follow-up on some of the farms that are currently there to make sure that they're following that plan that they had set forth?
Yeah, there is. And the ones that we've reviewed in recent years, we've had a lot of, you know, any time that they are potentially not following their plan, and sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't, we also get a fair amount of complaints about them. We have visited farms in the watershed many times over the last few years to make sure that they're complying with plans that we approved.
And are they changing things that they're not following the instruction on?
Are they changing things?
Are they changing how they are to...
We start issuing citations. We issue a notice of violation initially and then we issue a hundred compliance date. If they don't comply, it's $400, $120, then $840, and then we decide whether or not to pursue a law.
LOPAC forwarded a set of recommendations to AWD. LOPAC is asking AWD to develop its own set of ordinances so as not to rely on the city for those protections within ordinance. One of the things that LOPAC recommended to AWD is that there be no new agricultural development within the watershed. We recently had, I guess, I don't know, well, I guess the realtor stated that...
You say "we." Are you on LOPAC?
Okay, I apologize. I have just stepped down from LOPAC, so no, previously, yes. When I say "we," I mean like the community, like within the watershed, though. There was a farm plan that saw approval. The house is actually currently for sale, being sold. One of the seller points being that it has an approved farm plan. At issue with that, LOPAC initially, AWD came to LOPAC, asked, what do you think about this? That was sort of out of the ordinary, but the watershed manager was not, she was out on maternity leave at the time. LOPAC recommended against it specifically because they were sending recommendations to AWD that there be no new agricultural development within the watershed. But also because there were deficiencies in the plan. That homeowner then hired an environmental engineer to develop a buffer plan, at which point the watershed manager couldn't say this will be detrimental because that environmental engineer was able to demonstrate that, based on their calculations, this would not create a problem. The entire thing sloped downhill. There's a catch basin that was not included. There were all sorts of additional site factors. There was also legal that got involved because the plan was rejected at first. And so that's the sort of thing you see when these plans happen from time to time. I would prefer us to follow LOPAC's model and simply disallow it and avoid that, the possibility that something would sneak through in the first place.
I have a couple of things I'd like to speak on. I think it's important that people remember that whatever we decide or we vote on or we forward to city council, the planning board is not ultimately making a decision. We are crossing Ts, dotting Is, and forwarding it to the city council. They're the decision makers, not us. Secondly, these topics are topics the city council asked us to discuss and to decide. City council is formed by elected officials. The public body that's sitting here, working with us right now, elected city council. City council asked us to perform a task. That's what we're doing. Secondly, thirdly, the comments of political bias, frankly, is insulting. That's to infer that we are not intelligent, articulate, dedicated, educated, autonomous-thinking adults. None of us here are the mayor's underlings. Any one of us sitting at this table is more than willing to stand up for what we feel is right, regardless of who that is. So the political persuasion comments, the comments of us being the mayor's underlings are insulting and unnecessary, and I hope they don't continue the rest of this evening. Thank you.
I just want to second that and thank you for making that comment.
Thank you very, very much. Another thing I want to bring up is, a lot of people are talking about ratepayers versus taxpayers. My understanding is more like, you know, we're all taxpayers here in Auburn. Some of us have kids in school, some of us don't, but we still pay the same tax per spend, percent. To me, we're one city. It's not because somebody has water or pays for water or has a well.
Lewiston's also, has a lot of ratepayers in Lewiston, and we're making the city decision.
No, I totally get that, but the majority, obviously, live here.
I think the majority of our water goes to Lewiston.
Really?
Buy a lot, yep.
But still, I feel like ratepaying and taxpaying is very, you know, it's not so much, everybody pays taxes. So I just feel like our rate water is not really a huge amount of percentage to what we're trying to do here.
I think the concern with the rate is that if the filtration system's needed, then the rate's going to go up for everyone. And so an impact that we decide should be or shouldn't be could in fact affect people of Lewiston who didn't elect our city councillors and didn't, so that's, I think that was the point of some of those arguments.
They can get their own water.
I'm glad that you brought up the filtration.
It's a joke. I'm just, it's a lighthearted joke, everyone.
I'm glad you brought up the... May I proceed? I'm glad that you brought up the idea of the filtration waiver. I think that, to me, that's at the heart of what's going on here. Is that the whole purpose of this exercise is to develop a better set of protections for the lake than what we have now. The idea is that we know, we cannot be so foolish as to think that with climate change and increased development in the upper watershed, that we will forever continue to hold the waiver. Ideally, that's what would happen. But I think it's important that we be proactive to enact, to enact as many protections as we can to work towards protecting the lake better to, with the goal of prolonging the filtration waiver. My hope is that this is something, this is a discussion this community will have again, and we won't wait another 30 years to do it. That this will be an ongoing discussion that we have. We can only make the, we can only make our best decisions with the information that we have now. If we've learned nothing, is that in the last 30 years, we've gained a lot more information about the watershed and about lake health, about environmental health, building standards, septic standards. And I see these changes as a step in a positive direction towards protecting the lake for longer than it would be protected if we did nothing. But I also look at this as an example of the need to continually reevaluate and continue to evaluate whether or not what we're doing is the best that we can be doing based on whatever information we have. So this is a piece I'd like to say there.
Can we make a motion to reevaluate this in X amount of years?
You could recommend that to the council, but ultimately they'd have to decide to do that or... Yeah, I think your best bet would be to recommend that so that it's on the record to the council. And then the planning board can also initiate a zoning change in the future that will reevaluate some of this thing. But I don't think you could do that tonight to say five years from now whether I'm here or not that's going to happen.
So we had also discussed in the couple workshops that we've had here and the, some other hearings on many of this, that the regular testing going on in the lake would certainly be monitored to see if the changes that we're making are having an impact on the water quality. We don't have control over that, but...
Yeah, there is very regular monitoring happening, continuous monitoring, I think, happening within the lake. I wouldn't expect that these changes would, you know, when the day this gets approved, it doesn't change anything. It's over time. The goal is to make sure that new development happens in a way that lessens its impact on a lot-by-lot basis. We've already adopted, updated the phosphorus standards and we've already prohibited new single-family homes in 73% of the watershed, in the ag zone. This covers the other 27% of the watershed for standards for homes. But over time, each lot should have less of an impact than it would under the current standard that exists. And there will ultimately be, ultimately be less lots, lot potential over time than there is currently.
And Eric, at any point in time, we can always come to the city and staff and ask, you know, based on things that have been implemented, what, you know, how are they working? Are they being effective? Are there additional changes that, based on science, based on changes, based on whatever? You know, so we can always have those ongoing conversations.
And we can report on how many additions, alterations, and new construction projects happen over time as well.
Is there any more discussion?
It's a point of order. We're going to go letter by letter and see if there's a motion. Or are we going to, that's basically the way we're going to proceed?
No, we're going to make motions on all 11 of these items, starting on page eight.
That's what I said. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
We're going to go one at a time to see if there's-
Motion, discussion.
Right, yep.
I would make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend section 60-950, adding the word overlay to clarify the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district name as shown in section 6A of the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Any discussion?
I got a second.
Oh, sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend section 60-951B definitions, adding the definition of curtain drain, hobby agricultural use, Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, or LOPEC. Non-hobby agricultural use, soil horizon, soil horizon limiting or limiting soil horizon, and soil profile to this section as shown in section six. Oh, I skipped one. Yeah, we're going to go, this is the one I'm going to go in. Section C of the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend section 60-951A, boundaries, adding the word overlay to clarify the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district name, and changing city water district to Auburn water district as shown in section 6B of the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor? And D?
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend section 60-952, Use in Environmental Regulation A, Agricultural Uses prohibiting new non-hobby agricultural uses as of January 1st, 2024, and requiring approval by LOPEC's watershed manager to operate hobby agricultural uses after December 31st, 2023, as shown in section 6D of the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor? I mean, sorry, any discussion?
Is there any problem with referring to things as section D if there's an A section D and a B section D that we've been given from staff?
You're asking.
So when you say section D, we also in the staff packet got a section D from the A recommendation. So when you reference it in the staff report as section D?
So I reference section 6D, so six is suggested, motion B, staff and legal council recommendation. Does staff think that that's sufficient?
Yeah, and we can verify which section you're talking about based on that reference and understand what your motion is. So I think it is sufficient.
And I had referenced the page numbers that we were starting on to. All's in favor? Motion passes.
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend section 60-952, Use in Environmental Regulations B, Residential Dwellings in the Agriculture and Resource Protection Zoning District, by specifying that LD 2003 does not apply to the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district as shown in section 6E on page nine of 12 in the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And F?
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend section 60-952C by increasing the width of an untilled agricultural buffer strip near Lake Auburn or its perennial tributaries from 50 feet wide to 100 feet wide as shown in section 6F, spanning, beginning on page nine of 12 and ending on page 10 of 12 in the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. G?
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the city council to amend section 60-952D to prohibit all spreading or disposal of sludge as shown in section 6G on page 10 of 12 of the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
I might could, I guess I'll just keep, just keep going on.
H?
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the city council to amend section 60-952E to change water district to Auburn water district as shown in section 6H on page 10 of 12 of the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend section 60-952F, Private Subsurface Water Disposal Systems by, one, amending the separation requirements between the disposal field and the limiting soil horizon; two, increasing the separation between septic systems and tributaries to Lake Auburn from 300 to 400 feet; three, requiring that the plumbing inspector must ensure that new and replacement systems meet this set of design criteria; four, specifying the design standards of private subsurface wastewater disposal systems; five, specifying that systems must be on the same lot as the unit they serve; six, specifying that LOPEC or its designees shall have the right to inspect systems; seven, clarifying the follow-up steps in case of a malfunction; eight, changing the wording of the overseeing agencies and deleting section 60-952F5 as shown in section 6I, beginning on page 10 of 12 and ending on page 11 of 12 of the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
Discussion?
Can the planning, so, of all of them in here, this one is most tied to the switch from one acre to three acres. My preference would be, so I read the motion as suggested, my preference would be that we amend the motion to state that that be, that this favorable recommendation be contingent upon a reduction of density within the residential section of the watershed, not to exceed one unit per three acres. And I don't know how everyone else feels about that. I'd like to hear staff's feedback on that.
I know that that connection has been a clear recommendation of the board. It's been a recommendation of staffs. I think you could either do that by conditioning your recommendation on this, on the other one passing, or you could vote to delay action on this one until later in the meeting. I think either way could achieve that, that outcome that it's conditioned on the lot size change that reduces the total number of buildable lots.
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion to state that it be, that the favorable recommendation be contingent upon council's adoption of a density standard within the residential portion of the watershed, not to exceed one unit per three acre.
Second.
Would you consider five?
No, because we're not looking at going from one to five. We're going, we can't go on one unit a density not to exceed. So you can't have a lot smaller than three, yeah. You were going the other way, yeah.
Any other discussion? So we're going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor? So we'll bring it back to the original motion as amended by Mr. Seer's proposal. So do I need a new motion for? Okay. So, any more discussion? All those in favor? Six to one? All opposed? Motion passes.
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend section 60-1065 to clarify the text as shown in section 6J, beginning on page 11 of 12 and ending on page 12 of 12 of the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, seven, zero. And the last one?
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend section 60-1237 to clarify the text as shown in section 6K on page 12 of 12 of the staff report dated November 14th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. So we'll move on to agenda item four. This is a public hearing on a MAP amendment, and this is the particular one that Mr. Seer was referring to in the condition on, in the last one.
Yes, so we have seen this MAP amendment before, and it is the one that you just voted to amend the motion to make, to make this, to make the last septic standard changes contingent upon reducing the lot size. And, sorry, reducing the density, meaning increasing the lot size. So the reason we came to this as a refresher is that we, last year, did a build-out analysis of the potential new lots to be created or the potential lots that may become buildable if the septic standard changes. And the reason that they would have become buildable is that mounded systems would be allowed, so bringing in material to treat the effluent. So with that change, it could bring, it could bring an increase in buildable lots. So what this change did, what this change is meant to do is to, is to really circumvent or interrupt that possible increase in lots, in lots to make it so there is less potential for folks to subdivide larger lots in the ag zone. So we ended up with, before, so before the septic system change, if we have no new roads, if we have both changes, we see a little bit of a reduction and we see a little bit of a slight increase, but still much less than if we would not, if we were to not change the zoning here. So what, we also see that this change is recommended in the comprehensive plan. So in the comp plan, we can actually see that for the future land use map that the residential development district follows the, what we're proposing as low-density country residential in the watershed in the residential area. And in the comp plan, the residential development district is recommended to be a minimum of three acres per unit. So we're following the comp plan in that. So just to summarize what this change does is that in all areas in the watershed that are currently zoned rural residential, it increases the minimum lot size from one acre to three acres, and it also increases the road frontage from 250 feet to 325 feet at minimum. And we are recommending that you make this change. It will, it will reduce the possible, the possible future development in the Lake Auburn watershed by making it so one may not subdivide lots to create additional housing. And I am okay to answer. Any questions?
Go ahead.
I have a more general question, actually. I think it's a good motion. When we referenced the 2021 comp plan, is there any update on when we're going to have a finalized or approved by the state copy of our 2021 comp plan?
It's been approved by the state for quite a long time now.
Okay, we never got a physical copy. I was hoping we were still going to get the, I still have my 2010 comp plan.
Yeah, so we don't have printed bound copies. I think we've shared the electronic copies with you, but we can certainly print one for you as well if you'd like a printed.
Catherine, could you bring up the map of the existing and proposed that are in the packet? Just to clarify any questions, the area to sort of pass the apple orchards that are, that's not being changed is because that's not in the district. So basically, the changes that are being proposed follow the water line overlay?
Yes, yes. So what this does, it does result in some of the lot, some lots being split. So part of the lots are in rural residential, another part is in low-density country residential, and it is because it follows the watershed line. So everything within it is at low-density country residence.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions or discussion for that? Seeing none, I will seek a motion to open the public comment.
So moved? Second.
All those in favor? So reminder, you have up to five minutes to make any comments about this item. I'm seeing no one that wants to come up and talk, so we'll seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
To forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend the official zoning map of the City of Auburn entitled "City of Auburn Zoning Map Dated May Sixteenth, Two Thousand Sixteen, Revised Through Its Current Date and Revisions As Provided Under Section Sixty Dash Five Of The Zoning Ordinance, Changing All Areas In The Low Density Rural Resident Or Rural Resident Zoning District Within The Lake Auburn Watershed To The Low Density Country Residence Zoning District."
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll seek a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. And the next agenda item, item five, is a public hearing, another map amendment, and this is the Auburn, Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District again. So, I'll switch it over to staff.
Thank you. So, this is what we talked about at the last meeting. Wait, I'm sorry, did you ask us to get started?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, we talked about this at the last meeting, and following a number of subject matter expert reviews, including agreement from Comprehensive Environmental Inc., CEI, CDM Smith, Maine Drinking Water Program, as well as from, evaluation from FB Environmental Associates, we are proposing to, to amend the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District to match the most recent accurate data on the flow of the water, either towards or away from the lake. So, the change we can see is the watershed line would be moved from Grace Lawn Road, and we have seen, it's proven that the water drains away from the lake in this section. So, really, where this map shows is a zoom-in of what would be changed based on the data that we have. And it's agreed upon that, so the Maine Drinking Water Program agrees with the CDM Smith's finding that the drinking water program potential boundary, which is what this line, this new boundary line mirrors, is a conservative boundary that can be established with available data. And the purpose of this public hearing is to amend the city's Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay map on our GIS system to match the agreed-upon Lake Auburn watershed boundary. And the reason we need to go through this process is because this is a zoning map. So, it is said that it does need to follow, it's supposed to follow this other, the, it's supposed to follow, I think, AWD's line. And so, but because it is a zoning map with specific zoning ordinance attached, we do need to go through this process here. And we do recommend that, that the board approve this map amendment.
Any questions for staff?
Just a bit of a small clarification, or I guess it's a question, the, if this were to pass, this motion were to pass, that land would be returned on the zoning map to agricultural?
Like a? It's still agricultural right now, so I can pull up that map as well. So, this area on the Grace Lawn roadside towards the lake is currently agricultural. It is here now, too. There is another vote after this to...
That's what I meant, that's separate, just as if this were to pass, and that were not to, that would be agricultural land.
Yes, yep, exactly. So, this is only, it's not a zoning change, it's only adjusting the boundary of the watershed.
Quick clarifying question, this is where the dumps in the Berry Farm is, for the most part, correct?
This is the, this is the gravel pit of, like, this is Grace Lawn gravel pit, the open mining pit, and then next to it is the Auburn-owned old landfill.
That's the softball fields there in green.
Yep.
So, the dumps on the backside of it, the gravel pit, and the Berry Farm. That's all basically this neighborhood that we're talking about, correct?
Right, right.
I don't think the Berry Farm changes, that's a little further down.
Well, yeah, that's true.
The road.
The western side of the change is close to the Berry Farm, but doesn't quite go in from.
All right, thank you.
With the exception of that back corner, yeah, where Catherine's highlighting, that's the Berry Farm parcel.
I'm gonna ask the same question I asked last time. The language is very clear. The lake, as written, "The Lake Auburn Watershed District is that section of the city in which surface and subsurface waters ultimately flow or drain into Lake Auburn. As such, section is delineated on a watershed map and survey by the City Water District." We amended, we're recommending that that be changed to Auburn Water District, right? But on file in the office of the City Water District, the City Department of Planning and Permitting Services, and the city clerk. I don't get it. We can't change a map of where the water flows. It says it right here, like, the language is just very clear. I don't understand why this process happens if this is the language, because we could change the map to be anywhere, apparently, but it wouldn't match the language.
It also says that the map, the boundary should match the actual drainage pattern of groundwater and surface water. This process has vetted and confirmed that our current map does not match the actual drainage pattern.
Why does the map not default to that boundary, is what I'm asking, because it says it shall be that?
Yep. In order for us to use this map to apply standards that are different on one side of the line than the other, or within the district, or the other district, there has to be this public process to adopt that as a zoning map. We could ignore that CDM Smith, FB, and the Maine Drinking Water Program, and the Lake Auburn Watershed Ad Hoc Committee all agree that our map is wrong, and they're suggesting we change it. We could ignore that and just say, here's the map that the Auburn Water District adopted as the Boundary Planning Board, but we need you to hold a public hearing and adopt it as a zoning map. But it would result in the same outcome.
Well, I guess this is where I'm going. It seems like, our language says it shall do that. We have information that says our map does not match the drainage, okay? Our map does not match the actual watershed boundary. And that information Mr. Cousins has given us is coming not from political bodies, but environmental experts and state agencies. I don't understand how we, we can't adopt a different boundary, but it says we shall do it. So, I guess I just don't like this process, because I'm sitting here, and I'm saying, people are gonna come, and they're gonna wanna talk about this, and we're saying, yes, we want public input, but because of the way our ordinance is written, we must do this. It just doesn't make sense to me. I guess, I'm just bringing it up again, because it really bothers me that that's the process. If you're gonna have a public process, then it needs to be a public process in which public input can be taken, weighed, utilized, possibly create different outcomes. The way this system is set up, that is impossible. And so, I, so I'm just bringing that up, and I think that needs to be looked at with Sally at some point, moving forward, so.
Is there any more discussion? So, I'll seek a motion to open the public comment section.
So moved.
All those in?
Second.
All those in favor? So, again, if anybody wants to speak about agenda item five, you have five minutes to come up and speak.
Stephen Beal, five seventy-five Johnson Road. I know that the board doesn't usually entertain questions at this point, but Mr. Seer raises a very important procedural point as to whether or not public comment should even be entertained if the board's decision or desire is to obtain advice from legal counsel about whether any of this should proceed. I think that needs to be decided first before there is any public comment section, or if there's going to be any at all.
Depp's Jardins, twenty-seven sixty-eight Turner Road. I've been there for thirty-six years. Some of you should go back and read what the Water District wanted to do thirty-six years ago. They wanted to own one mile back from the lake at all points. It was an interesting thing. Obviously, it's passed. I don't wanna see this changed at this point. Somebody brought up earlier regarding there'll be a change of mayors, city council members. I don't think any activity this close to that being changed should be forwarded to the current council, because it sort of takes away the ability for new people coming in to be a part of a solution. The current council members that will not be continuing can always say they had a part in bringing it to this point, if it all passes in favor. I don't, I understand about the science, way the water goes. Did anybody ever think that we would have the kind of June that we just had with a precipitation? Anybody in this room ever consider that that was likely? I certainly didn't. I'm not as old as many here, but I'm older than others, and it's never happened in my lifespan, and particularly not while I've lived here. So, if we have a tremendous snowfall followed by that type of June, the people that have studied this drainage, can they guarantee that we won't have an overspill? Don't we all kind of live our lives trying to make the decisions for the safest possible moving forward? Or at least doesn't common sense dictate that we should? When we're young, we don't necessarily follow that idea. I just think that it's something that should be considered before it gets moved forward with your support.
Hi, my name is Carrie Myrick, and I live at ten-ten Summer Street in Auburn. And I wrote the petition and was the contact person on the committee which last year successfully repealed the city's rezoning of almost all of the entire pit area that was rezoned, was undertaken without the scientific basis, which was why we undertook writing the petition drive in the first place, when it was rezoned in the first place, the first time. So, the new watershed boundary line, which is now being proposed, has a scientific basis for the first time, and the Grace Lawn Petition Group has reviewed this proposal, and we support the new line. And so, we are not opposing this, the new line that is being proposed.
Hi, I'm Peggy Volokh, and I live on North Auburn Road, three ninety-five. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I, I have two questions for you, really. My first question is, I'm reading this, and it says, "The zoning ordinance to reflect the actual drainage boundary based on existing topography and known..." If the topography changes, do we have to redo this? Do we have to reevaluate it? Because I have a feeling if anything's built on there, it's going to change the topography. That's one question I have. And the other question I have is, are we gonna evaluate every single part of the watershed boundary? Why is this part being evaluated, and why not, you know, all the other parts of the boundary? If we really wanna have an accurate boundary, I think we have to investigate the whole thing, not just one part.
I was attempting to determine whether or not it was going to be proceeding, a public hearing, my, when I threw it out previously. If there wasn't any response to that, may I make some substantive comments about this proposal?
Yeah, you weren't out of time either, so. You weren't out of time either, so.
I'll agree.
Stephen Beal, five seventy-five Johnson Road. I was not a member of the formal five-person committee that obtained the repeal of the zoning change by the city last year, but I was a member of a slightly larger group which worked very closely to achieve that result of the repeal of that ordinance. I and that group are satisfied that the scientific information that was generated by CDM Smith late last year and earlier this year, resulting in a three-D hydrological modeling of the current water characteristics of the pit area, is satisfactory to support the proposed revision to the watershed boundary line, and that alone, nothing more, nothing less, just that line in the area where it's presently depicted, and I do support it.
So, I don't see any more public wanting to come up and speak, so I'll seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion passes.
So, to clarify my earlier remarks, I think Mr. Beal raised an interesting question. I was not suggesting that we need to determine whether or not we should proceed. Sally has already met with staff and told them that we must proceed with this, because it is a zoning map. And all zoning maps require, any changes to the zoning map require a public hearing. My frustration is that we are stuck in a place, we are in a position where we are pondering a change to the map through our public process, as we are required to do, but then we are also required by our ordinance to adopt said map. So, that's where my frustration comes from. That's, to clarify, that was what I was getting at, not whether or not the process needed to be stalled or whatnot. It's just a very sort of interesting intersection of ordinance language. It's, it's just, uh, a very, uh, sort of interesting intersection of ordinance language, and one that I think needs to be looked at in the future.
Eric, do you have a date of when the new draining study, uh, draining study was completed?
So, um, I have the letter from the Main Drinking Water Program that was included in the, um, workshop packets. I don't know if it was included again this month. It was in September, first or second week of September. I wouldn't say that that was the conclusion of a study, um, but that's when the Main Drinking Water Program looked at the FB Environmental Study, uh, the CDM Smith, uh, study and suggested line, and then sort of rendered their own opinion about the data, um, being sufficient for them to establish this conservative line, um, based on existing data, but also acknowledging that in the future, if there could be additional data collected, um, that they'd reevaluate.
So that was after all the rain that we got? April, May, June, July, August?
Yes, yes, it was after that, and there's never been any concern with the pit actually overflowing, um, other than where they've dug below the groundwater table, um, and they can continue to do so under the existing pit approvals. The pit very rarely accumulates any water in the bottom, but it's never been close to filling up with water, so. It dissipates very quickly.
Thank you.
I know that, uh, USGS is, has been conducting LiDAR surveys of watersheds. Um, I know that they were looking at the Auburn Water, uh, Lake Auburn watershed. Has that work by USGS been, been completed? Has staff seen that?
It, it hasn't. We've seen their draft maps periodically over time, and they are proposing changes, um, to the watershed boundary and parts of the watershed. And I know that our original maps were based on their maps. But, uh, in order for us to change the regulatory framework, if they come out with a new map in the future, um, the city would have to have this type of a public discussion to update the boundary and other areas if they chose to, to match the new USGS opinion of the boundary.
Okay, because there, there was a question about whether we are investigating the, the entirety of the watershed boundary, um, and I, I did know that USGS was doing that work. So am I hearing? Cause we like to ask questions that have been asked of us for, for, for answers to be given, so, uh, is it fair to say that if the city were to get those maps from USGS and they conclude that the boundaries are different, that we would then have to go and reevaluate those, those areas where they've changed the boundaries?
It is, but I would just want to note that they are different maps. Um, USGS will not consider groundwater movement. So the way that they would look at the pit, um, because of the, their maps are legally required to be based on topography, is they would look for the lowest point in the rim of that pit and assume that if the, a flood happened and water filled the pit to the top, which way would that go? Ours, by ordinance specifically, requires us to look at groundwater and topography. It is, it is a different map. Um, our map includes consideration of more information than what USGS will consider.
I, I was gonna bring up the same question, but it was, why is this particular section? And it's because we have that ground wa- ground well monitoring that was included in the FB Environmental Report, because there are so many ground well monitors in place, because the landfill was previously in that area, right?
We do monitoring because of the pit as well as the, um, landfill, but also because we have known that the topography has changed over time because of the mining. Um, and the Auburn Water District, um, in the past, previous management, a few minutes ago, um, had already started negotiations with the pit owner about swapping some land along the lake, supported, um, this idea that the pit is no longer draining towards the lake, or parts of the pit are no longer draining towards it. And back in 2010, Norm LeMee was the district manager. He was on our comprehensive plan committee, and there was support from the Auburn Water District at that point to amend our comp plan to support this idea of recognizing the true drainage, drainage boundary that they knew existed, uh, because of the data, so, we have the data because of the gravel mining, um, because of the landfill, but also because there was investigation happening over the years to move towards a change that would accurately reflect the watershed boundary and allow for zoning change.
Uh, question was, is the topography going to change with building?
So it, it will. Um, there will be grading within the, um, pit. The topography around the pit is changing constantly in the pit. I mean, it's an active gravel site. Um, we will have to look at that, um, in the future for any proposed developments on how the stormwater, uh, changes to ensure that it is remaining an internally drained pit. I think that that's important to highlight, though, is that, um, if we do nothing, um, we just stick our heads in the sand and say that this map that we've had for a long time is accurate, and we think the water that falls in that area is draining towards the lake, when the professionals, the experts in the Main Drinking Water Program have agreed otherwise. We're really just protecting the continued mining and blasting into bedrock, crushing of material, heavy equipment. A gravel pit like this creates runoff that is worse than a developed and engineered site with proper stormwater. And that's something that staff's considered, um, as part of this as well.
So I guess I was gonna be my question. Would continuing mining the pit be more detrimental than developing it potentially down the road or whatever, and maintaining it where it is now?
Uh, I just want to jump in and say, we're no longer talking about the science and the watershed boundary that we're discussing right now. We're discussing possible future uses, and I think that that is going to be, uh, a primary topic of discussion in, uh, the next item. So we might want to hold off, um, and do that then. Sorry.
Is there any more discussion? Okay. I request a motion.
Uh, I would ask that, um, it seems that Mr. Bergeron has stepped out. I would ask that we
Oh, wait.
Wait for Mr. Bergeron.
Did not see that.
I make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to City Council to amend the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District and the City of Auburn zoning map dated May 16, 2016, revised through its current date and revisions, provided under Section 60-5 of the zoning ordinance to reflect the actual drainage boundary based on existing topography of the land and known groundwater flows. This new boundary matches the conservative line that was peer-reviewed and agreed upon by FB Environmental Association, uh, Associates, Comprehensive Environmental, Inc., CDM Smith, and the Main Drinking Water Program, as well as recommended by the Lake Auburn Water Quality Ad Hoc Committee, as shown on the attached maps included in, uh, the staff report dated November 14th, 2023, with subject heading being Staff Report on Proposed Map Amendment Revising the Lake Auburn Watershed Overlay District.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, should we consider amending that to have a last sentence pending approval from legal per points made by Mr. Seer?
Oh, I don't, I think, I don't think that legal's gonna review, have a problem with us doing that, this. My gripe is that we have to do it this way, I guess. I don't, I don't think there'll be any, I think legal has already told staff that we need to do this process. It can't be a change, um, without a recommendation from us and then final approval by City Council. So my question isn't about whether or not this process would result in something improper. It's more that the process itself is sort of odd because there's no choice in the process.
The horse and the cart are in the wrong place.
Yeah.
All right. Then I, I withdraw my amendment recommendation.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes. So item six is a public hearing on a map amending, amendment to consider amending the zoning of, um, the area that we're talking about?
Yes, so this proposal is to amend the zoning in the area that you just voted to recommend to council to remove from the watershed boundary, from agriculture to, um, general business. And the reason for this, um, there are a few reasons that we're recommending this change be made. First, the Future Land Use Plan and the Comprehensive Plan recommends that this area near Grace Lawn, um, Mount Auburn Ave, this, this parcel essentially be zoned as the Commercial Development District, which, um, in the Comprehensive Plan is pretty synonymous with the General Business District. We believe it's the best suited based on the Comprehensive Plan and the surrounding districts. The next consideration is an environmental one, an environmental cha- an environmental consideration. We do not ha- I'll reiterate first that we do not have a site plan before us here, so by changing the zoning, we are not voting on any particular, any particular development. If anything like that were to happen down the road, we would be here again and reviewing how, um, how that development fits and how it's, how it's dealing with, um, treatment of wastewater, et cetera. But if this area here stays that we just removed from the watershed, or are recommending removal from the watershed, as, um, as agricultural land, it can continue to operate as a grandfather gravel pit. Um, so what we've seen with the continued blasting, that can essentially continue indefinitely. And with a possible site plan or development in the future, um, staff, engineers, et cetera, have the chance to treat, to treat the site, to require BMPs, stormwater treatments, um, street treatment systems, et cetera. We can require that the nutrients remain on the site. We can't do that as it stands, um, as it's zoned, because if they're not proposing anything new, then we have nothing to review and therefore nothing that we can ask of the applicant. So we also are considering, we, staff ran a model to look at with a few assumptions based on how much land is vegetated, how much land, um, is currently a gravel pit if it were to be developed, how much might be impervious, how much might remain vegetated, and with, without BMPs currently, and then after BMPs. It appears from the model that we've run that there is a reduction of both, um, of both nitrogen, total nitrogen, um, the pounds per year, total phosphorus, um, the bio-oxygen demand per year, sediment, and the flow volume, all are reduced when we, when we, um, introduce BMPs, low-impact development standards to the site. So the, we're recommending this change to general business because it gives us a chance to do that, to improve the site. Also, the Comprehensive Plan recommends that we consider, um, new, new creative land uses for, um, for vacant, for vacant land, for existing, for things like existing gravel pits. The Comprehensive Plan does call that out, so we think this is in alignment with that and a good step toward, toward making a change in this area.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
With the, the fact that we don't have a site plan in front of us, how can you assess what the BMPs would be?
So we don't know for sure, but what we did is, just as kind of a, a model to see, we use the federal government's, um, Environmental Protection Agency Region Five modeling for reporting, um, Clean Water Act 319 grant projects. So we ran a hypothetical model by plugging in some data points into that, um, which is, um, which is a calculator that you can access online. Um, we did that with a few assumptions. We, okay, the assumptions include that, um, forty acres of commercial, uh, we're assuming forty acres of commercial development, which we don't know, it's all hypothetical, twelve acres of vacant and undeveloped land, um, and eight acres of open space revegetated. And we're comparing that to forty-six acres of open gravel pit, four acres of gravel road, and ten acres of vacant land. So we ran that, I'm gonna actually pull up the report so we can take a look at that. So we ran that with those assumptions plugged in those numbers, and again, we're, engineers would review this if this were to happen, but, um, there we go. So we have total nitrogen, total phosphorus, um,
Can you zoom in on that for folks looking at the screen, please?
Yes, absolutely.
I'd also like to take a second just to interject for the public. You know, we have a lot of abbreviations and things like that. BMP stands for Best Maintenance Practice.
Yes, yes.
So that's a, a standard assumed to be as responsible with a situation as possible environmentally for stormwater and things like that. BMP stands for Best Maintenance or Best Management Practice.
BOD stands for Bio-Oxygen Demand also, and we're measuring this in pounds per year leaving the site, is what, what the measurement is.
So the pre-BMPs are the notes. We know that's what it is right now. Is that correct?
That's what we, that's the model, what the model ran. We don't know, as in, we haven't done, I don't, to my knowledge, we don't have, like, this verified as a study from engineers, but based on the tool from, from the EPA, these, with the assumptions plugged in, which matches what is existing on the ground, that's what we get.
So the federal government's model is estimating best as it can. That's what we currently encounter, correct?
With, with the assumptions that they made. There's a list of assumptions they've made.
Yep, yep, we did make some assumptions, but yes.
And we, we think captured what exists on-site accurately within the margin of error in the map, um, and then made the assumptions based on what we would expect for development on the site, but this would also be looked at based on any future specific development proposal, uh, if there were a site plan review process.
What amount of the pit actually
What amount of the pit actually remains if we were to, remains agricultural if we were to move forward with this proposed change?
I don't have the exact acreage that remains agricultural afterwards.
So, the pit, I, I don't either, I don't think. I can try to find it, but the pit follows my cursor. It's, it's really just this parcel here. So, we see this, yep, the ag, the ag one behind it. Oh, yeah, that, that remains as well. But it's the first, the first parcel, the majority of it, and it stops the zoning. We are not, even though the landfill we've determined is outside of the watershed, we are also not proposing to change the zoning of the landfill because it is a former landfill, or it is a landfill and we believe should remain agriculture because of it.
So, with the right access, potentially, those other areas could continue to be a grandfathered pit? Or would in all essence, the pit not, because the pit's not allowed under general business as an acceptable use, is it?
The pit use could continue under the general business zone. I think the property owner's intent is to try to provide the rest of the data necessary over time to CDM Smith, Main Drinking Water and the Auburn Water District, to, that Main Drinking Water said they would need to further evaluate. But for the time being, the pit could continue under either zoning district, but we know the property owner is motivated to do something different with it under the general business zone.
Is that current ag zone L being mined?
Much of it, yeah, yeah, almost. I wouldn't say all of it, certainly not all of it, but the majority of it is.
So, while this proposed change wouldn't stop, because I know we've, we've heard, you know, that without a potential change, the existing mining, the blasting could just, would potentially just continue. Whereas this provides an opportunity for other purposes for that land?
It certainly does. And it's tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars to put together the information that it would be required for you to review a development, and it's hard to make a decision to do that without knowing that the zoning is in place.
Any more discussion or questions for staff?
I mean, that has happened in the past where we've approved a zone change and then those hundreds of thousands or tens of thousands of dollars had already been spent for a development that did not exist, or a zone that didn't exist. And that was the next month on the agenda. So, it's not out of possibility.
Okay, that's it. Okay, I will seek a motion to open public comment.
So, moved?
Second. All's in favor? Motion pass.
I was having, I was having a good boy moment on the way up here. Ain't no good guys, ain't no bad guys, just you and me until this last presentation. This last presentation, quite frankly, is a joke. You assumed, you presumed, you had a cartridge and a pear tree. I mean, the whole thing is fabricated on a guess by golly. I'll back up. John Bunnell is my name. Eighty-five West Auburn Road is my home. Until a short while ago, I was the chairman of the Lake Auburn Water Protection Commission. I was retired from that position when the mayor, the current mayor, appointed someone to replace me. Go figure, I'm a wise guy. Shoot my mouth off a lot. Thirty years ago, we entered into an interlocal agreement, which made it clear that development was going to be kept to an absolute minimum. Now, we're introduced to the notion that extra development, development will occur. And two hot issues came up, one of which was resolved with your agenda item number five. The boundary on that side was established by agreement. Mr. Seer is absolutely correct. It also is a best by golly, but we all agreed to it, which I guess has a way of making an unreal thing real. We shall see. The other issue had to do with this rezoning. Now, the fact that taking, moving the property line closer to the road has given those of us on the ad hoc committee a little bit of relief that the lake will be protected from further development as a result of that, from additional development. However, it also gives the developer the opportunity to work on the remaining land that will be agricultural. And either succeed or not, it doesn't make any difference to us. But the zoning change that you now propose to general business is ludicrous. It is absolutely preposterous. I encourage you to pull out your zoning ordinance and look at the things that are permitted in a general business zone. I don't care how many assumptions you make or how many presumptions that you would have. This is just not scientific. It's not accurate. It's just by guess by golly. You have proven this evening to be very resilient. You've listened to a whole bunch of folks. You've made some interesting decisions. You've been accused of being political, such and such, and so forth. I quite frankly, don't care. You acquitted yourselves well. You deserve a medal just for being here. However, you really cannot allow this zoning change. It will ruin the lake for sure. Thank you.
Stephen Beal, once again. I do not believe that the board has the authority or the ability at this point in time to entertain this zoning change proposal. Whenever one seeks to change either the text or the map reflecting zoning in the city of Auburn, there must be appropriate public notice given. When the zoning change seeks to change the map, as is the case here, there's a requirement that fourteen days' notice be given to a butters by mail and twelve days' public notice published in the newspaper, the Lewis and Sun Journal, and republished again seven days in advance of the proposed planning board meeting in which the proposal comes before the board. In order to do that, you have to have a definitive statement of what the parcel is you're seeking to rezone, to change the map for. In this case, the area in question here for which rezoning is sought was defined only twenty-five minutes ago. You cannot make the assumption in putting out public notice of a proposed zoning change, a map change, that the boundary of that area to be rezoned will be rezoned, will be changed as a matter of assumption. That makes a mockery of the notice process. It assumes that the change of the watershed boundary was going to occur automatically. It was not automatic. There was considerable discussion about it. Some people supported that, some did not. But nonetheless, that, the change was made twenty-five minutes ago. This board cannot consider rezoning that area without appropriate notice and reconsideration of the matter with that appropriate notice. That won't take very long. In one month, you can give the adequate notice to put this matter properly before the board. The composition of the board will not change in that period of time. The city's fiscal year will not change in that period of time. Everything will remain the same, except that this board will not be running the risk of taking an action which would going to be subject to being overturned by not following the requirements of the city ordinance. And again, this is the city's own ordinance. This is not an abstract declaration from federal, state, or county governments. This is the city's own ordinance that requires this notice, and I urge you to follow that requirement and table this matter for one month. Thank you.
My name is Pam Rousseau, seven forty-five West Auburn Road. In the city's, in the council's vote to rezone the larger pit parcel on March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, it specifically voted seven to zero to exclude the landfill pit and the hundred-foot buffer around the landfill, landfill from rezoning. Therefore, the pit and the buffer were never rezoned and remain in ag, AGRP zone and in the watershed. I think you're putting the cart before the horse because what you just did right now does not include the hundred-foot buffer for the, the landfill. Another thing that I'd like to say, I got lots of notes here. I'm a little confused. I was sure that the planning board and the city council just approved measures to make sure we could save ag zone. And yet, here we are. Well, we don't save ag zone. We'll just take it out of ag zone, so we don't have to worry about it. So, that doesn't make sense to me. I thought we just spent lots of time trying to save the ag zone. And then the other thing that I'd like to mention is the phosphorus and the, all the chemicals and everything. So, I just have a novel idea. How about if we, the city buy that piece of property from Mr. Jenneran, and so there's no gravel pit in there, and leave it? And just like it did when it was, all that sand was deposited by the glacier, it will fill up with trees and you won't have to worry about anything or even making it less than, you know, it was worse with the gravel pit, and this is gonna be better if we develop it. But if you let it grow and the city can own a nice place right there, and just let it go back to the nature.
Hi, Dennis Berger on twenty-three Dexter Avenue. Really narrow technical question. It was, came from your discussion a little earlier about what's going on there. I thought in the prior discussion, you had voted to realign the watershed boundaries, change the map to do that. I also thought that this line that defines general business over here correlated with that line, that change in the map. But then you had discussion after that about whether mining could continue outside of this general business zone. And if that's the case, it sounds to me like there's mining going on in, in the watershed? So, I was confused with your discussion. I'd like to hear you clarify that. I don't think that's the intent, but the discussion was very confusing. Thank you.
Bruce Ryu, eighty-five Mary Carroll Street. Young lady had mentioned that changing this area here from ag to general business is in the comp plan. And I believe you misspoke because I think there's only five hundred feet on Grace Lawn Road that was in the comp plan to be changed to general business, not two hundred feet from the lake. Certainly, I don't believe that that's in the comp plan.
Good evening. My name is John Cleveland. I still live at one eighty-three Davis Avenue. I want to speak to two points here. The first point I want to speak to is to do some clarification regards to something that seems to be overlooked or Brent mentioned briefly. And that is in regards to a hundred-foot buffer zone that is around the landfill. You may recall that when the petition went through and the city council took the action to repeal the zoning that was done previously, they did two other things. They took the landfill out of that area because it makes no sense to have it in there. But they also created a hundred-foot buffer zone around the landfill. That was a seven to zero vote unanimous from the city council. That exists right now. They voted that in last year. So, that buffer strip is there now. The purpose of the buffer strip is to make sure that you maintain the integrity of that landfill. There are all sorts of toxic and asbestos materials and much more in there. Very, very steep seventy-degree grades going up to that tops of those landfill. You need access to those to make sure you maintain the cap on that so that heavy rains or erosion or natural areas or some other kinds of activity does not in any way damage that cap, and you need access to get to it. And that's where you need a buffer strip to keep inappropriate things away and get access to it. So, it's extremely important. I'll share the map with you. I have the map here. This is, this is the official map from the city of Auburn on their zone. If you look around where the landfill is, there's a hundred-foot buffer strip existing right now. However you proceed, don't forget about that buffer strip. Needs to be there. Secondly, let me talk really quickly, and it seems a little oppositional here, but even withstanding what you do there, I'm opposed to this change. I don't think it's in the best interest of the city. First of all, there doesn't exist a boundary line, as you mentioned earlier. Even what you did tonight doesn't change the boundary. It's a recommendation. You don't have the authority to change it. That boundary line, as it's written on those maps, does not exist by the city of Auburn. It has to go to the city council to be approved. You now have noticed to do something to change this into a commercial zone in which you gave notice to something that hasn't been adopted yet by the city council. You can't have public hearings when you don't know what the boundaries legally are to the zone you want to change. That's a significant problem. Also, remember, twenty-one hundred, twenty-one hundred people signed a petition a year ago, and it was changed, not to go back to agricultural resource protection. You need to give some consideration to that. And finally, let me say, there's a lot that's unknown here. You don't know what that's gonna be doing for all these theoretical things of what it may be developed or not developed, who's gonna own it, who's not gonna own it. No one knows that for sure, what's gonna happen. That comes when somebody brings forward a proposition and a development plan so you can evaluate actually what's being proposed, not theoretically what might happen. And it's not appropriate to say you only have two choices. Either leave it the way it is or be commercial. There are other choices that a planning board or other planning folks would could look at, which might be an even better choice that, that benefits the city, protects the lake, and provides for appropriate use of that area. You don't know that tonight. There is no urgency to do that. Finally, the current owner is planning to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, their own money, to drill wells to monitor the flow of the water so they can make some scientific determination in that whole area of the pit where there were no wells because they disappeared, they're destroyed. You should wait for the good science. You should wait for the good science. When that comes forward and you have that information, you can make a more appropriate, science-based decision based on a much wider range of where that water is flowing in the entire area, not just a few wells that were there and then doing some theoretical conversations by the engineers because they didn't have any other data. There is no urgency here. You can do this later. Please table it.
Bob Hayes, 172 Allen Avenue. I think I'll follow up on other choices. I think that, you know, we've really concentrated on just zoning change in general and considered what's being shown just as general business. There are other options. I think that we've had a lot of discussions about 4.2B. To me, that would even be more appropriate than general business. I think general business is a full bag of possibilities. 4.2B provides maybe a transition. To me, Mount Auburn Avenue, you have commercial business or general business to the west. I think, to me, Mount Auburn Avenue would be a good break. It would be a transition, maybe going to something that's less intensive than general business. I think a lot of the discussion has been that we want more housing. I think what we've heard in proposed development, that most of that was going to be housing. We need it. And I think 4.2B provides maybe the connectivity for small shops to service maybe more intense housing development there. But again, I think there's time to consider other options. And I wish you would do that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gatto. I'm the consultant. I'm working with pit owner, JIG Aggregates LLC. I'm not going to get into all the arguments, but I did want to give you folks some background. The company owns 108 acres and we're mining probably 100 acres of that today. It happens to be in both, it's in the Ags district now. We're mining it and have been mining it for many years. We did a study in 2007, as Summit did, that showed the groundwater was away from the lake. And it's still, there's some questions that are going to be answered and we're looking to do that. But I wanted to let people know that, you know, whether you change it, don't change it. The pit is an option where it can stay forever and we can mine because we're licensed under the DEP and under the city to mine gravel to the extent of the property. We are hoping to get an opportunity to put this in a zone where we can do a multifamily, mixed residential development because we think it would be a higher and better use of the property. So I leave it to you folks where you go. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you want me to, on behalf of the owner, if you need answers. Thank you.
I don't see anybody else wanting to come up, so I seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Is there any discussion?
Well, we usually do some questions. There was one specific question, which was, is there mining going on within the watershed? And let me ask a further question. If the new watershed boundary were to be adopted, is, would there still be mining occurring within the boundaries of the Lake Auburn watershed overlay?
Yes, there is now. It would obviously be less afterwards if we recognize that part of it is not in the watershed. But portions of the active pit would still be in the watershed after a change like this as well. In the watershed overlay district.
There was a question that was raised about the comp plan and the distance. Can you clarify or have you been able to find that?
Yeah, we can look at that on this map. I think it was 1,000 feet from Grace Lawn. We can double check that for you.
Were you talking about the 100-foot buffer?
No, there was a reference to a 500-foot setback that, or piece of land that was included in the comp plan, not the entire area.
Yeah, the 2010 comp plan assumed a distance off of Grace Lawn Road as a general guideline to get the concept in our plan.
So here it appears to be commercial development district from before the area was, or that followed the watershed line or the watershed overlay line before it was repealed in council last year. So that's, appears to be what it, what it follows.
Can you switch to 2010 comp?
Yep, I can do that.
This is the current comp plan, future land use.
Okay. So we'll take a measurement. Yeah, that appears to be accurate of the 2010 comp plan. It looks like there was a line that went about maybe 900 feet from Grace Lawn Road. And that designation is, what is that? Regional business development, it looks like?
Where's TV?
It is, okay.
Okay, thank you. It appears that majority of that is in line. To me, there's not a whole lot remaining that falls outside of that. So, okay, I just was curious as to how we are in line with the comp plan recommendation. To me, it is.
There was a question brought up about public notice and the fact that, well, it was stated as fact that the boundaries of this proposed zone change couldn't have been designated prior to the vote on the watershed line. Could we have zoned, could we have discussed rezoning this general business without changing the watershed?
Absolutely. And both maps were available on the date of the required notice. So yeah, you could change to general business. You changed from rural res, or recommended changing from rural res to LDCR inside the watershed. They're independent decisions and the maps with accurate boundaries were available for the full required notice.
Thank you. I think that that's sort of, I think there's a misconception that we couldn't have had this discussion. With the reality is those two discussions can happen independently. I don't think that anyone would ever propose doing this, but it would be possible to rezone all of the ag land within the watershed into something with a very high density. There's nothing that prevents that from happening. The watershed overlay is oh, superimposed over an ordinance, but the underlying ordinance doesn't depend, the fact that it exists doesn't depend on the watershed overlay. The watershed overlay imposes restrictions regardless of the underlying zone, but any zone can underlie the watershed, the watershed overlay. So we heard this, we heard this last meeting too, this idea that these couldn't be taken up because this map that we're seeing couldn't exist until we made a decision that happened about a half an hour, 40 minutes ago. I think the fact that this map is in a PowerPoint kind of physically demonstrates that the map can exist before we made the decision. There are clear delineations here that this map was available. So I just, to me, that, that seems sort of an odd, odd argument, but.
I hope this wasn't covered while I stepped out. But on the right-hand slide, Catherine, where it shows the proposed zone, do you have a way to measure the distance from that zone closest to the lake to the lake? Because I heard about a 100-foot boundary. Could you expose what that is?
Are you talking about of the buffer from the landfill?
Yes, I heard during public comment about it, the 100-foot buffer zone. And if you could have a way to, what the proposed change closest point to the lake is, but the actual distance is from that zone to the lake?
Okay, we can try that.
I think the 100-foot buffer in the comment, I think, was referenced.
Yeah, so I misunderstood that.
Yeah. My question, like falling on to Tim's comment, was would that 100-foot buffer from the landfill automatically fall into the zoning change? Would they just have to follow suit?
No, that was something that the council changed, I believe, after the planning board had recommended a zoning change. You could make it part of your recommendation, but it's not current, currently part of the proposed map. What it does is it prevents the existing access road from being used to access the development and pushes that access road further from the landfill. So they have to build a new access road next to the existing access road if they were not allowed to build in that 100-foot buffer or use that area. So I think it was well-intended, but I don't know that it's necessary. That's up to you and the city council if you want that to be a part of the change.
Then I guess I'll bring back my question from earlier. I don't know if it'd be for you guys or for Mike. Would continuing to mine the land be more detrimental than potentially using it as general business?
Staff's opinion has been that the existing blasting and continued excavation below the groundwater table and into bedrock through blasting has more risk than a vegetated, developed site with engineered stormwater controls. We use the EPA model that they use for determining whether or not a project should be eligible for federal funds to improve water quality to show the benefit of a change. We use that model and that confirmed what we had thought that, you know, vegetating the site is ultimately, and developing the site with engineered stormwater controls can result in cleaner. It all goes into the ground, but it can be cleaned and infiltrated into the ground and be better than, and less, I guess, more predictable over time as well, that the blasting and bedrock could change fractures in the bedrock that wouldn't be as likely if it was a developed site with engineered stormwater controls and no more blasting.
It was mentioned that we could look at other zones. I found it ironic that T42B would be brought up. I think it would be a slap in the face to rezone this T42B at this point after we are continually told about 2,100 people. So in understanding that, my understanding is that the only zones that abut this property are agriculture and general business. There is suburban residential within proximity. Yes?
Yep.
Okay. I have no problem that the board wishes to consider another zone. I guess I would say, what zone could you choose to put down there that would not be spot zoning or run afoul of ordinance? We can't, to just sort of slap something in without doing a much larger rezoning effort. To me, it's either suburban residential or general business at this point now. And I think that the general business provides the greater incentive for the developer to stop the continuation of what is an open pit mine. Now, I've got no problem, the guy's going to make money, he's got a gravel pit. That's how he's making his money right now. We can't tell him to stop. We can only incentivize him to do something else. It, to me, of the choices, general business is, creates a much larger incentive to change the use of this property than even, say, suburban residential. And I don't even understand how we would be able to slap something else down there that would be its own little island, that would, that would be spot zoning. So, you know, as we consider like, as we consider the idea of what's going on there, and I know the idea, we, there are a lot of assumptions being made. The only assumption I'm willing to make tonight, I will not assume that will be housing. I will not assume that it will be commercial. The only assumption that I'm willing to make tonight is that any development on the site will require engineered BMPs that do not exist on the site currently and that will never exist on the site unless the owner is encouraged to trigger those BMPs being implemented through development. So that's, to me, that, we're talking about assumptions. There's no point in assuming what it's going to be, just what the implications of doing anything other than mining are going to be.
I think we should go a step further and not make any assumptions because, and we've talked about this before, we're not zoning for what is probably going to happen. There's a landowner clearly has a plan and his plan be aligned with the, some of the assumptions that were made in the modeling that was done. But we're making a zone change where the landowner could get struck by lightning and his heir decides he could do what he'd like, including the general business, things like motor vehicle and equipment sales, motor vehicle service repair, things that would have a lot higher impervious zone, impervious area impact than the likely development. So I would, I think we should assume, make no assumptions in this proposed change as to what the future use would be.
But even that would trigger BMPs and treatment of phosphorus impervious area. This is what I'm saying. I'm willing to assume.
But these, the first, the numbers that we were given there were made off a model of, of an assumption of the future use. So if I would, it would definitely be a net.
There's always, there will be a net no matter what goes there.
Yeah, so I.
There'll be a net positive no matter what.
With that assumption, with that, if that is an assumption we're going to make, that there would be a net, or even if that's fact. I do think that there would be other zones. And if it's suburban, if the closest thing we can do is suburban residential that would allow for more housing, trigger these BMPs, but also not allow these car dealerships and things like that. So I think it would be wise that we consider a different zone.
I hear you. I'm going to go to say what I, what I said before. I think general business provides the biggest incentive because right now, the owner is making money. Is not going to have to reclaim over half the pit, even if they chose to walk away. Will just stay there. And I guess, I, I, I absolutely appreciate what you're saying. I think you and I will just end up disagreeing on what, how much of an incentive someone might need to, to invest in, in a complete change in the property.
The current use is not, like it's endangering our lake at the same rate it has been since forever. It's not like all of a sudden it's going to start. This might, this has been an operating gravel pit for as long as, you know, for 20 something years. It's not, it's the, making the current use a bad guy, that doesn't seem like it's necessarily accurate.
It's not a bad guy. It's just that. It's not a bad guy, it's just that that mine operator has the permits to blast bedrock down to the groundwater table. If that is, and I'm not making this guy out to be a bad guy, he's going to make money too, okay? Like, we all have our job, that's what, that's how he derives income from that property. I have no reason to not believe that that will continue to be operated like that and those operations will continue to happen. And I think that I would much rather see, honestly, a, if it came down to it, because you brought up the idea of a car dealership, I would rather have a car dealership go in and have a net positive on the groundwater coming off the site, quality coming off the site, than find out after one too many pieces of bedrock have been blown, that we've now changed the entire groundwater table.
Let me ask you this, though. Instead of that car dealership, what if it was a neighborhood? So that we wouldn't have, like, go back to, I'm not saying don't do any change. What I'm saying is, I think we should consider the suburban residential change because that would trigger the BMPs, allow for increased opportunity for housing. Maybe it doesn't incentivize them as much, but it still is an incentive and it doesn't allow for that potential car dealership.
But it's not going to allow for that mixed commercial use that developer is going to need in order to pencil that in.
This is where we come back to where we disagree, so...
Yeah, we're just going to keep going back in circles, so...
Gentlemen, can I interject on this? I hear both of you, and both of you have very valid points. I'd like to point out, in our definition of a general business district, on special exception uses, automobile filling stations, automobile repair and service stations, automobile and marine sales lots, and sales and service agencies, automobile, marine paint and body repair shops, and things of the like, require a special exception use that would have to go through the planning board for that. So, I hear what Riley is saying. By default, making it general business district or zone doesn't automatically allow for the things that you're bringing up.
Making it suburban would completely disallow, is what I'm saying. Those wouldn't even be an option for special exemption in a new zone.
I agree. My point is, I think the happy medium is the fact that we still have the special exception uses as a buffer to consider those things as or if they arise.
Or we don't even have them arise at all by not allowing them and choosing a zone that doesn't allow them.
For me, the general business, not only does it provide for a tie-in directly across the street, so it's continuous, it also, if we are acknowledging that we need the potential for additional housing, certainly to me, the multifamily, there's that opportunity. At the end of the day, for me, I just don't want it to be, continuing to be a gravel pit where that has the potential, and I feel that while there is no guarantee that by us changing it to anything, it will occur, I think that, from my perspective, putting it as general business provides the most opportunity for options, given the size of the area. So that's my thoughts.
With that, I'll seek a motion.
So I'm going to make a motion that we recommend to the council, a, this isn't written right, that we support the proposed change to include the general business boundary be adjusted to include sixty acres shown in the map based on the following findings. The 2010 and now 2020 comprehensive plan recommend expanding the commercial zoning in this area. This can be accomplished without creating a new district by using the existing general business zone. The new Lake Auburn watershed overlay district boundary is supported by the watershed boundary, it's supported by the watershed boundary, has been reviewed and agreed upon through studies by FB Environmental Associates, Comprehensive Environmental, Inc., C.D.M. Smith, the Maine Drinking Water Program, and the Lake Auburn Water Quality Ad-Hoc Committee. This zone change carefully follows this new adjusted boundary but excludes the twenty acres that make up the abutting property known as the City of Auburn landfill, and that the proposal can be implemented without detriment to Lake Auburn and is recommended by the comprehensive plan.
Before, there is a second. Did you mean to say under number two, the new, the proposed new Lake Auburn watershed overlay district boundary, and then this zone carefully follows this new proposed adjusted boundary?
Yes. Insert proposed.
Thank you, I just seeking clarification there.
Second.
Eric, will that cover it?
Yeah, we have that motion.
All those in favor? Discussion?
I think Riley and I could discuss it all night, so...
I assumed that was done. All those in favor? All those opposed? So motion passes six-one. So Agenda Item Seven is a public hearing map amendment. This is from a citizen's petition. I'll hand it over to staff.
So this is a proposed map amendment, as you indicated, driven by a citizen petition. We did confirm that it had the required number signatures. It is limited to a single parcel. The parcel ID is 174-004-001. The parcel is currently zoned agriculture and resource protection, and they, the petition is proposing to change it to rural residence or low-density rural residence district. Ag zone, as you know, requires a ten-acre minimum and has some significant limitations on housing. Rural residential would allow for a one-acre minimum lot size and allow for single-family homes in that area. As we looked at this area, I think Catherine's going to pull it up on the map here in a second. As you move to the south of the parcel, that was petition for a zone change, the back edge of the rural residential zone follows the floodplain as it existed in 2014 when those, when those maps were updated to match that boundary. We have looked for a reason why, why this parcel in particular, that's now been split into three pieces, now that the owner has passed away and the parcel's been split up among their heirs. We could really only guess and listen to the opinions of some of the heirs of the former owner, that she didn't want her taxes to go up, and she opposed a residential zone being applied to her land at that time, and it sounds like the council and planning board went along with that. But if you look at the existing boundary over here, it stops and follows the property line instead of the floodplain line at 174-004-002, and then follows the back edge of the lots along Riverside Drive until you get to the parcel at the front of it, and then goes back across the street. So there is some land, open fields on the parcel, that must have been convincing at the time, but it really is a lot that's close to town, surrounding parcels on, to the south. Our zoned rural residential across the street, zoned rural residential, and we believe the comp plan can support this change for this lot. Happy to answer any other questions.
There was a mention of spot zoning. Has Sally weighed in on this specific change yet? I ask because we are, I have never seen an instance where we have left a parcel in so that we would leave this parcel in the back ag and make its own little island. We have never done that. It's my understanding that we've never done that either, and thinking back, I'm thinking all the way back to, you know, Mr. Boyer being on the board and having discussions around things like this. This essentially constitutes a spot zone. So has Sally weighed in on this specifically?
Not specifically as a spot zone. I think, you know, it's odd why we treated these lots differently than all the ones around them originally, and it would be odd to have zone change applied to this lot alone. We could certainly look at applying it more broadly if the board thought that making a change here made sense, but we're bringing you the petition at this point that we received. It's limited to that parcel. There's no urgency to it. If you would like that opinion, or if you'd like to see another map that doesn't single this lot out, certainly prepare that for the meeting.
I would certainly like that opinion before we go forward. To me, that just seems very odd.
Can we also get the other maps, too? I think that's a good idea as well. If there's another option to do that without making any of the spots, if there, if it is determined to be spot zoning, then another map that could do it without...
Yeah, I don't think it will be, but we can get that opinion. And, you know, one thing, to be consistent with how we treated the other areas, we could provide a map that on the backside follows the edge of the current floodplain instead of going all the way.
Is that something that everyone would want to see before we really move forward?
I would definitely be in agreement with it. It came up in the East Auburn area as well, and at some point, I want to circle back on that as an option as well, so...
Would we change the other two lots in conjunction?
Well, I think the idea is, we would want to hear from Sally whether this is even, whether this would be a, this would create a spot zone, because that's something we can't do. And then if we do want to see this change, it sounds like folks are saying we would like to consider what it might look like if the three lots were included. That would require us workshopping first, but staff would need to be able to know that we want to workshop that before we can do that.
My two cents is hearing from legal, and just the kind of, my own personal two cents is I'm still of the school of, you know, if you own property as an American, you should be able to kind of have some liberty with it, so I'm, it's not offensive to me if legal says it's good.
could you give us the options for how to handle this? Because I know there's a difference between just not passing it and tabling it and...
Yeah, based on what I'm hearing from the discussion, if you wanted to see this next month, and also see another option that at the rear of the parcel would follow the floodplain, to be consistent with how we've treated the other areas, as well as including the non-floodplain portion of that, the missing piece. And it sounds like potentially the lot to the north as well, the non-floodplain portion of it. You could make a motion to table this pending that legal opinion and for staff to provide the maps that are more consistent with how we've treated the rest of the area. And we could do the public notice based on those for next month as well.
And that would allow us to include the surrounding lots?
Yes, yeah, we would publish the notice slightly more broadly than this month, and those maps would be available. But I'd also encourage you to hear from the public that's here tonight before you...
Is anyone, before I make this motion, because I'm about to make a motion that will just, was, had anyone come here specifically to speak about this?
We kind of suspect you, since you're back there.
Would you like to...
We have to stay here, you don't.
Can you hang on a minute?
If you would like to speak, one moment. I'd make a motion to open up the public comments section of the hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
My name is Stephanie Mar Damien. I'm a resident of 703 South Wutham Road. Part of why I tried to get on council is to represent Ward Five and to protect the ag zone. I don't know, I can't figure out exactly where this is, but I think it's after the Turnpike. So I guess my question is, once it's not ag, it's gone, and one of the things I wanted to do was represent the ag. I would be interested in what the topography is of that land, to know, is that a great hayfield? Are we giving that away to housing? I'm all for housing too, but in the right steps. So I guess my concern would be, is it a good hayfield? Is it, you know, like, mill farm right there? And would they be like, oh, I'll take that for ag? So, you know, I'm just, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Is that right across from the cemetery?
It's north of the cemetery. It's just to the south of the Turnpike.
Just past the overpass?
Yep.
So this is the Vickery Road neighborhood. Drive a little bit further. There it is.
All right, thank you.
This one? Oh, this.
I think that's Delecto's building there. Oh, no, it's further, that's further south.
Yeah, no, this is...
That's the large three-family farmhouse with the barn they got.
Yeah, it's a little bit further up.
That's between the Turnpike and the church that's down there.
Yes, yep.
So as there's no one else here to speak, I'd seek a motion to close public comment.
Second.
All those in favor?
So I would like to make a motion to table this to a date certain of next month after staff receives legal review and also offers another map option for us to consider.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. As there is no longer any public here, we will not open public comment this evening. Miscellaneous items?
Next month, oh, gosh, okay, so next month, we have, Eric, you may need to help me. We have, one is a proposal for a continuation of a residential home that was in the ag zone. It was discontinued because it, the home, I think, was burned or destroyed and then abandoned. There was time that lapsed, so the folks are coming through to propose, to propose a continuation of that home and build new one. They had also wanted to do a bee farm as part of that, so we're going to consider that. And we also, what else do we have?
Yeah, I would just add with that one, what's odd about it, it's not like they found a foundation in the woods from 150 years ago. We know when the house was demolished, it was owned by the Lewiston Auburn Water Pollution Control Authority. We actually issued a permit for a replacement house, and then, for whatever reason, they didn't build that house. I'm not sure why they chose not to, but we had approved probably the money at the time, yep. So now they're looking for the ability to... Um, so now, um, they're looking for the ability to replace that house, even though their permit has expired. I know one other one is, um, pre-hung doors on Riverside Drive, right in this neighborhood. Um, if you remember, we had, uh, made a change to the lot coverage allowance in the general business zone um, that they had supported, and that they had posed the question about. They're looking to do a business expansion of, uh, right around fifteen thousand square feet of building area, that would almost double the size of their, their building and their, their production. And then, time-dependent, uh, we're hoping to get to this, 'cause we really need to soon. We'll hopefully have some draft LD two thousand three related changes that would expand what we're required to do in single-family districts beyond where we currently allow multifamily homes to address those requirements. I can't think of another one. Pal Center's January, I think.
Yeah.
Pal Center will be coming, not next month. Uh, oh, Stable Ridge is proposing an amendment to their site plan for next month as well.
And also, I think eventually we need to discuss possibly adding or changing the zone along the Vickery Road area, we discussed doing a a zone at a lower density than T four two B, I'm not sure if that will be next month because of timing, but that will probably come up soon, I imagine.
But I'm glad you said that, because I was gonna, I was gonna say, if we're having, I guess we're still on public record, if we're having, uh, if we're looking at having city water and city sewer run down there, it would be crazy to have one side have city water and city sewer and high density in the other one. I mean, they, they, they still could access the city water, city sewer, it just would be so incongruent, you know?
Good word, Evan. I think he's your teacher.
My room is near the math department.
Speaking of incongruent, um, when, how would, what's the right process to bring forward? So, a while back, we had approved that lot in East Auburn, and I know Riley, you had mentioned that one of the things you wanted to make sure of was that at some point, rather than looking at it as just a specific lot, that we look at the area. Certainly, the comprehensive plan supports potentially changing more than just that one lot, um, and was curious as to how we go about forward, talking about it and putting it up on comment.
Yeah, I think the board could initiate a, a wider change, or we could, uh, you know, we could plan on having a workshop about some of these other follow-up pieces, give us a little bit of direction next month, get them in the queue. Um, I think we have, we'll have, if LD two thousand three changes a year, we'll have a relatively full agenda, but no reason why we couldn't workshop some other ideas, and you can tell us which ones are higher priorities for you, so we can do them.
And I actually have a draft map of this expansion that we talked about, that's just been sitting on my desk, so we could definitely bring that back.
So, I'm sensing, um, uh, we'll have a little more breathing room in the coming months?
I'm sure.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it, I'd be willing to bet, at least for a month or two, that we have a little breathing room before we have new direction from the new council.
So, it's also would be a good time for, if we had any ideas about potential zone changes or what have you, for us to propose them. Do, do you wanna hear about them before we bring it up here, or do you?
In it, it doesn't matter, I mean, if you want us to help prepare some maps so you can explain what you're looking for, we're happy to do that, if you bring it up in a workshop setting, we don't need to see it. But whatever we can do to help make sure you have the information you need to communicate what you're, you're looking to do, and maybe it makes sense to um, next month, pull together a list of kinda things that have been hanging out there that we need to get back to, and ship those over to the council, make sure they're still priorities for now.
That's a very good idea, yeah, 'cause we did have a lot of items that we discussed, but we get kinda get, we'll get to that, we'll get to that, we'll get to that.
Yeah, and this was one of them where I'm like, I, I, I keep wanting to come back to it, but yet, we've always been very full with it, so. I guess my question, Eric, would be, what do I need to do or say or propose to encourage the conversation or bring it up as a topic?
Yeah, so I think if you, um, in the board, um, want to reconsider that, just tell us that with a quick motion that we should add that to.
What he's saying is, you've gotta make a compelling enough argument that a majority says they wanna look at it. So start drafting.
Start dra- start drafting the argument, all right. I can't just say Riley wanted a bigger review, and there's, there's our review.
That's pretty compelling, I'd vote for that, so.
We can help you with the maps that you could use for a narrative for next meeting if you think you want.
So, do, do we need a motion for him to ask that?
No, no.
Okay. Okay. So I'll seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
In favor? I think the motion passed eight to zero here. Sorry, seven to zero.